Do you have a panic on your key or anything? I have a panic button so if you hit it, it's the alarm.
I don't know what said it. Very embarrassing.
All right, we're gonna, uh, is it in the meeting? Uh, going off the agenda, we're going to, we did the public comment section. So we're moving to the super tense report.
Uh, knowing that this was going to be a challenging beginning to the meeting, or at least, you know, some tough topics of discussion, I wanted to lighten it a little bit by sharing in part the three and a half minute video that I used for my convocation on Tuesday, last Tuesday with the staff, or last Monday with the staff. Typically, I have a welcome back breakfast for the staff, and then I bring them in here and try to, um, try to say something inspirational to them and give them some sort of motivation and some sort of, also, formal direction of what are our, what will be our focus for the year. I tried to bring in some levity because it can be very heavy, the topic, because we're sort of laying out the year ahead. So this year, I pushed my skill level a little bit and I used my data management specialist who videoed using our iPads kids at the end of last year responding to the open ended question, "What did you learn this year in school?" And so I used some of them and created a movie, a three and a half minute movie with some little music, inspirational music, that I used as part of my convocation speech. So I wanted to show you that.
Excuse me, can you shut that off right now? Because there are going to be kids on here. Thank you.
So, uh, yeah, we did do science. We did do science, as evidence of our guilty. And sound, right? So that was, that was just a fun thing that I did. Our enrollment, you got it, five sixty-nine. Mike, you said there were seventy-eight. We only have seventy-one here in our power schools. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, and that was, that was a mispeak on my part.
All right, all right. I just, with all those people here and me reporting, I want to make sure that our power school number is seventy-one for kindergarten.
But that's still up one than it was when we settled.
Well, these, these.
We're setting up.
There's a lot of houses.
Yeah.
There are a lot in South.
We, kindergarten went up in the last few days before the year started.
The birth rate is the number of powers.
Is that?
Well, that is.
Is that because of people living in the town registered or they moved into town?
There were, there were a few kindergarten families that we had set stuff to multiple times that didn't respond. Some responded in the last few weeks, and there was one or two that were like a day or two before the year started.
So they hadn't lived in New Hartford?
My understanding is that, is that kindergarten didn't represent any new.
I'm just curious to see how many people are like behind them.
Are those late birthday?
I don't know that.
Um, the point, the point is, is that we do have a lot of movement with kids coming into town. You know, there's a lot of houses for sale and, you know, things do go up and down both directions. I, I wanted to let you in on some professional development offerings that we have that are, that are really due to some of the legislative changes. So just to give you a sense of some of the things we're dealing with. So the state of Connecticut is offering, um, the, their first informational session on the educator evaluation and support, the new core requirements for teacher evaluation and principal evaluation. And so that is just the beginning. I want, but to show you how much time and energy that professional evaluation, teacher administrator training is going to, this is an introduction by the state, but the state has asked all of our ress to actually train all of the regional districts. So Education Connection is, you know, we deal with Education Connection. And they've offered, uh, they are offering their model development group for this professional evaluation. And just to give you a sense, there is sessions, there are eight sessions through the school year for this training as we have to prepare our evaluation model to reflect the state guidelines. And, uh, they give you four options for how you want to pay for this. A full team district membership is twenty-five hundred dollars. So there, so again, the state legislature has created these new requirements. We are required to go through the training. We are required to pay for that training. This is not something we budgeted, per se. We did not budget. So we'll have to take a careful look at that professional development budget. So, and then you have the Common Core group, and, uh, and they are offering training for the Common Core. Now, again, uh, there are eleven sessions, and if you want to send a team, a team of about six people, it's four thousand dollars. We're training everybody. That one we got, we got taken care of with our, with the modular program that I showed you from Leadership and Learning last June. I remember that presentation at Bay Harbor School. So we've got that handled. We, we're moving forward with that piece. But then there's all kinds of other councils and, and organizations that Education Connection will be formulating to assist us as we move in the direction that, you know, for both instructional components, technology components of our core curriculum. So there are huge, both money implications to these changes in public education in the state of Connecticut, time and energy and personnel that will have to, um, to be focused for this piece. So I just wanted to give an example of this, the plethora of things now that are coming, um, to my, to my attention.
Along those same lines, I'm sorry, I'll let you go next. You know, I did not attend that meeting of the regional, but I did watch the video. So I've got a copy. I don't know if anyone else has had the ability. I do think everyone in this room should see it. It's really important. It's right in line with what we've been talking about, what our education's going to be, about the new requirements. Mr. Costa's a very talented individual, very clear with the, with the lineup of PowerPoint. So if you haven't seen it yet, I really, I could say it's required because I can't require anything, but strongly, strongly recommend that everyone do so. Because it is part of our own learning. And it wasn't eye opener for me, I'll be honest with you. It was, you know, I'd read a lot about the Common Core and the new requirements. Finding it hard to grasp, and this definitely, you know, laid it off from being a lot clearer. I think we had more work to be done as a board, but this was a really good start.
I can make one comment. Ryan and I were there. I think it's important to understand the pressures that are being put on Connecticut districts. These unfunded mandates, as you just noted, with the, you know, the, the training that essentially many instances districts have to cough up. But I also think what was really critical is in, um, the end of that session, I, especially the, the last part of the videotape, Jonathan Costa said something which I think was extremely significant. And that was, if you focus on certain core things, everything else will fall into place. And those core things were like, um, clear sense of curriculum. Philip helped me. I think paying attention to.
The instructional piece.
Yeah, it's instruction, capacity of your teachers, and I think it was, you know, data, good data. And if you focus on that, the other pieces which sound like extras, but will fall into place. And I had to think, and I think you, you know, you commented, our district fortunately seems to be extremely spouty. And that we clearly do have, I think, a, you know, heads up, heads up on, on a lot of other school districts which are just, I mean, I don't know how some of your high need districts are going to be able to deal with this.
I agree. I, you know, I, I, we agreed on that. Yeah, it, that's not to minimize the work that lies ahead of us.
Yeah, I mean, one statistic that you pointed out to me that I saw was, you know, the idea that you could see a thirty point drop in your scores and the fact that if we were scoring in the nineties between historically done and now it's in the sixties and the type of backlash and parental concern as well as town concern that we would see under that scenario.
We really need to educate, uh, the public to understand that these standards are being elevated much, much further beyond anything we've seen in the past. So that a good school district will, you know, will be sitting there looking at data that we have not seen in recent past.
Well, Alicia brought it up. You, you got the Common Core just printing out kindergarten as a thick packet. And I've talked to a lot of kindergarten teachers and what they're requiring kids to do in half day. And, and not, when we went to school, when my youngest was in school, he didn't learn something until second grade. And now it's being pushed earlier and earlier and earlier to the getting high and high. And that Common Core, if parents actually started seeing the packets for each grade level, and then it divides into different areas of the grade level. You got the math, you got the language arts, you get the science. Science curriculum is pushed more and more now. Um, you've got so many, like, tiers to just one grade level. It spends out, it's amazing.
So with that, if those of you who either participated in the Jonathan Costa piece or saw the video, saw him talk about the school performance targets. And just, now, in a, in a future meeting, Brian, I'd like, there, there is a Connecticut, State Department of Education website that explains these documents. I've actually now received our first report card, which is based on the Connecticut Mastery Test now, with our targets. So we have now targets to meet next year. And those targets also include the subcategories of, of students with disabilities. We've never had to meet those targets or we've never been reported because we've got such a low, a small profile. But if you remember Jonathan, it's now twenty children, not forty. So we now do meet that. And so there are new performance targets that we must meet in this current school year's performance, uh, CMT performance in March. So again, we've, we've got to pay attention to these because there may be some implications if we don't meet these targets. So we want to make sure we do. So again, some more attention has to be paid toward those mandates that are coming down.
Melissa, I can't talk.
No, no, they, they, my question is different. With all the professionals, with all the additional training, but, with all the additional training that is required by the state that clearly we do not have budgeted for because we're finding out more and more what those requirements are? Are we going to require, are we going to need to use a lot of our substitutes so teachers can get this training during school day? Or is that going to be able to be done besides the days we already have designated for professional development? Do you foresee?
Clearly, there's going to be more time for needed, but these are smaller teams, as I explained, and a team of six. So we would typically probably take the school-based administrators and the school-based curriculum specialists, and maybe make up a team, perhaps, with them. And that, our, that would be, we'd be a team of five that would attend that. I'll have a little more carefully, and then they'll be able to move that information. I mean, that's, that's probably the model we would use. I, the administrators, I didn't want to use that model for the Common Core training.
That makes sense.
We could, we're small enough and we can have more power in our training by training everybody at the same time. So that's why.
No, I just, that makes sense, yeah.
But that was a significant investment as well, so.
I'm just wondering if we're, I just want to see, I know we can't foresee the future. It could be wonderful, but I just wanted to see how much substitute we would cut.
It's certainly going to be taking more personnel. At this point, I, I don't, I don't think we'll be taking classroom teachers for those things that I mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
One thing about that training that I noticed is it's really a top-down effort where people train each other, then you're responsible as you move back up for the evaluations. So, you know, the people that are going to be dealing with the training, since our administrator's over here, they're also going to be back, be responsible to make sure that their, their training has actually worked. And they're going to have to do some of that. So, I don't know, as I said, it's a bit of an eye opener for me, and, um, I highly recommend everyone else do it if you haven't today.
And, um, I, I anticipated that the board would have a question about how we implemented the new con, teacher contract. So in anticipation for that, I just want you to know that we have a established set of meetings for the teachers to use their additional time for your typical staff meeting purposes. And then another meeting is going to be designated for technology and the training around technology. And the last one is designated for curriculum work. So we, we, the administrators have created on their own set of meetings that use those three meetings per month piece that, I, I just anticipated that either somebody in the public would ask you, "How are we using that time?" Or, "This is how we use it." Okay? Just, you've heard me, the state mandates. We have new bullying requirements based on the legislation. Now this year, we have, we have to make sure that we begin to survey our children, our teachers, and our parents about, about, uh, how, how we're administering the, the state school plan and how well it's working. Uh, we have now a definition of unexcused and excused absences. So we'll have to take a look at that. And remember, last year, they left that wording silent. The state didn't give us how to define that. That has, has become defined. So, uh, lots of mandates coming down, lots of things to do, lots of responsibility. So I'm going to report on each of these things in a more, you know, kind of slower and some more information once I've gotten the information and can thoughtfully explain it to you. The other thing, uh, New Hartford Education Fund. Uh, we received, uh, our quarterly notice. Through June thirtieth, we have a balance of twenty thousand eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents in our education fund. Don Whelan and I will be meeting in the current, coming weeks. Thanks to Janet, our E-rate reimbursements are, have already begun to come in. And as you know, we, we, in anticipation of those amounts, we reduce our operational budget. So those funds coming in are really important to us. And I want to assure you that they have been coming in. And again, this is an area that Janet has handled exclusively since she's become my administrative assistant, and she's done a great job. So thereon, that's coming in. And last but not least, the most popular discussion at my table in my office has been transportation last week. And I know for many of you, it has been as well. I, I think you've received an email from me indicating that there was a last minute change done that was enacted by DACCO that was not reflection of, of the discussion and decision that the board had made last year. And it was the Thursday before school began that I learned of it. I decided that I was going to let DACCO be the professionals, and, and if they said this was going to work, I was going to give them the opportunity to have it work. And obviously, there were some challenges to begin the year relative to consolidation, but not just the consolidation. I think one of the misnomers that's out there is the consolidation has caused all these transportation staffers. That's not true.
No.
It's, it's clearly not true, and I don't want people to think that. Because there are huge changes, as Brian said earlier. There are changes in where people live and their stocks and whether or not they're living with a custodial parent or not. So, um, it takes a few days, a week to work out many of those issues. So I've asked people that have contacted me or, or people that have contacted principals to say, to let, the principals let me and people know, "Give us a few days to work these things out because some of them can be worked out." The, the one that wasn't able to be worked out or wouldn't work itself out was that, that one consolidation route. And I, I think as most of you know, we have, I have made an executive decision to take the bus route, Bus One, which happens to be the route that your children would travel in, Melissa. They don't, because it's the shortest route and the route with the least amount of children. It made the most sense for me at this time to add that section of South Road onto that bus. And while it may seem like a, a detour of a great amount of time and, and mileage, it's a three mile detour, and it's a thirteen minute detour as I've determined from both riding the bus and also, um, talking to the bus driver. So it seemed like that was the best way to solve that issue right now because Bus One had, as I said, had fewest amount of kids by far and had the quickest stop by, the, the quickest ride by far. So it just, it made sense. I, I stop by the bus barn every day. We will continue to evaluate the bus routes, but we really want the dust to settle. And you can take a look at that objectively and see if you want to make any, any other tweaks. But at this point, it, it was clear we had to make a change, and a pretty quick change. And that's why I, I made the executive decision that I did, so.
You tweaking New Hartford too?
No, that's a new bus driver. And that, and, and they keep telling me, including this afternoon, that that bus route is getting shorter. And as he becomes more accustomed to doing the job that he has to do, that, that it will be able to, to be less than sixty minutes. Now, unfortunately, and coincidentally, Friday afternoon, we have a child that was sick on the bus. So obviously, that delayed even more. So.
That wasn't actually a problem.
We're working on the issues.
Um, has the issue that, that, that brought to my attention that instead of, there's been many buses, well, not many buses, there's a day bus with three students per seat in order to get everybody on the bus? Is that accurate? I mean, I've seen it myself.
I would have to know which bus you were referring to.
Um, it's in the south, it's in that area. I don't know if it was the four or five or the, that consolidation. There was a bus?
Well.
There was two buses and they were grouped together.
Right.
And the parents are saying that since the grouping now, there's three kids on a seat. And it's getting a bit much when you have the sixth graders, they're.
One of those buses was this bus route that I took care of with the, one of, that's where, where a lot of my attention has been focused.
Yeah, that is true.
It has not come to my, you know, I haven't dealt with any other over-capacity buses.
Okay.
But they wouldn't necessarily be due to consolidate, again, to consolidation. It, it's just the natural attrition, a natural flow of kids.
I mean, do you know what DACCO standards are for acceptable number of students on the?
Three is okay.
Well, three is okay. Three is okay.
Yeah, because they, they, seven has three, but the one that comes down one.
And typically, with smaller kids, they can fit on. Now, we, we don't like it. We don't like it. And so if there are, uh, but, but not every kid rides the bus every day.
Right, I definitely.
So I would need more specific.
Right.
Are you referring to bus four?
I remember the, who was that? Do you know what bus that person was on?
People really need.
There's bus three and four, the one that does Honey Hill. Which one's that? Is that three? Is that four? I can't remember what it's.
I think it's four.
All right, if we could, I think we ought to move.
So I, I think what you need, what you need to do is as concerns come, as if, if people are contacting you, you got to direct them.
Let's try this. Well, direct them over there.
Because other than this, other than this Bus One issue with Bus Three, your, your bus, I, I've not heard specific.
Yes, I know, I said, I had a bunch of people talk to me, and I referred to you, and he had.
So I want to assure you that we're dealing with the math that you have.
Yeah, I do want to commend Philip because we knew this was not going to be an easy transition, whether it's consolidation or not. But I also.
Remember Steve saying that?
Yep, and he was right, as usual. But the point is, and I want to get out, is when I asked Philip, "What are you doing about this?", and he's like, "Well, I'm reaching out, I'm touching base with every one of his parents who called me, emailed, I phoned call." And this goes to show, you know, this, you know, this meeting we had today, this was not an opportune time. We had a hard time getting ourselves together just because of how much time the first week of week, school was devoted to that. So whatever, he's been, he's been doing your work to get this all accomplished. And it hasn't been easy. I, it must have been myself, a little displeasure, but it, it's all focused on DACCO. I'm not going to go there with that, but I just want to let you know that I'm very pleased with the way Philip's been handling this, at least trying to address everyone individually and responding to everyone's concerns. Because it's not, it's, it's one of the hardest part of the job, so.
And I haven't heard, because I've heard parents tell me, "We saw Philip going to the barn." They saw you going to DACCO. They're watching here.
Yeah.
They, they know you responded whatever they call you, so.
I'm appreciative of the respect of the statement that we're going to towards that now, but I think when we revisit, DACCO is the responsibility in all this. Maybe when we get closer to our budget season.
Yeah, well, I mean, coupled with that, I mean, DACCO, you know, DACCO's, my disposal with DACCO is that even though they're required by August fifteenth to publish routes, this year, they, they publish routes and they've already been closed. So it doesn't seem good to publish a route that, that just doesn't make any sense. But keep in mind too, that if we really are getting this consolidation plan off the ground, we still have a few years left in the DACCO contract, and we're involved with them. And we need them to be actively involved with this sort of whole muscle thing. So, you know, we could spend all the time trying to fix this year, but if we really could have this happen, it's going to be a whole new scenario for next year too. And we can be more proactive with it. Couple of years ago, I think Philip, you actually rode all the buses even prior to that. And we shouldn't have to go to that route, but we just have to be aware as we move forward with the stuff that there's going to be some further complications involved. And just know, it's, it's no way around it. We're not, we're not going to get around that, so.
Melissa, I do want the board to know that DACCO knows I'm displeased, as I said in my email, at every level of the management organization. And they know that I'm upset. They also know that you're upset as a board. And they will continue to know of my displeasure with, with how this was handled. Hopefully displeased.
Yeah, because if you type in my address, it doesn't come up.
So we, we have to hold their feet to the fire on a few things, even if it means we withhold their August check until those lit, those dates. And I, I wasn't playing hardball before, but I will, if it's, if it's necessary, I will.
Okay, so you're done with writing your super tense report?
I am, sorry.
It's fine. Uh, routine visits in a couple of minutes. I didn't read those, so I'm going to table that because I didn't realize they were attached to the, uh, past the agenda, so I didn't really have them. They're a little more lengthy than I'm just going to read through now, so we're going to table those. There are no communications to the board that I'm aware of. I didn't receive anything. We would direct your reports to standing committees. See, obviously, we are home long-term planning, so I think that's positive. Uh, probably hasn't been much else that's happened since our last meeting, but is anyone else, I don't need you from starting off negotiations and?
Well, I just sent a communication to my fellow negotiations committee members to set a date for our planning and lay down some things, so we're pulling.
Anything else report, has many policies here. Obviously, there's been a change in the wellness. We see that there's no longer any cupcakes and pralines and birthday cakes coming to school. So that's, there's been some changes there.
But can you just clarify, that's not in the policy? Was that an administrative decision to be that specific?
It's in the action plan.
Yes.
Oh, the action plan. What's, is that in our policy?
How are we going to enact a policy that healthy foods will be served?
Where, where do I read, where do we read that?
Because I've got some questions, and so I mentioned my policy.
I found candy, but I didn't see anything specific. So where would I find the action plan, about what it's called?
We haven't.
Well, parents want to read it. And I keep telling them, "Look, it's a policy, it's online." And it's not actually in that policy online. So I need to be able to direct people, I would like to be able to direct people to read.
I'll put it on the website.
That would be good.
Oh, I've heard a lot about Friday folders because it's no longer that easy thing. You can click, and I've heard a lot of parents not getting the information from the Friday folders because now it's not only you have to click on this to get to the link, to click on this to get to the link, and they're not doing it.
No, you just have to click on one, and you go to the website.
It goes to the website. They need to click on Friday folders, and then you have to click to make sure you get right Friday folder. There, some people are not getting it. I've had people come to the.
I like them coming to get five thousand.
Yeah, well, I personally think the Friday folder is.
I love the Friday folders, and I'd say, I was saying, you got involved in the click.
That would be nice, Paul. Thank you, Phil.
All right, um, the next two items, Board of Education goals. Keith did put together a draft of some revised goals, but I don't think they got distributed ahead of time, right?
I just sent them to you.
You sent them. So we, we, we have discussed those. We're going to table those for the next meeting. Part of the rationale is that I think our goals are evolving as we're getting further along here.
They're updated to reflect some of that information.
Right, and I think the point is, is, you know, I'm not overly concerned about pushing them off a little bit further as we hone them in because we're also in the same process. We're moving forward with the goals, some of the goals. We're, we're already launching some of these initiatives. So, um, you know, that's something we're going to take up with the next meeting, which may ultimately impact your evaluation too because they got to go hand in hand. Our goals transfer to your evaluation, and what our expectations are. So I think we table that one too, which I'm not necessarily versed in because I'm not feeling great. The one last thing that we need to possibly consider doing right now, you heard me mention the request of, to Dan about launching a building committee and we want to see a formal vote from our board. Many would like to make such a motion that we approach. Many would like to make such a motion and report some about building committee, uh, could you say anything more after that?
Can, can, can I just make a point?
Yeah.
Because I don't know that you can, how can you do that?
Without our agenda?
Without it being on your agenda? I know it's a technicality and I know he gave you that option, but at the same point, I, I don't, I think Robert's rules would, would. You've moved past that?
Yep.
That could, could have happened during that motion, so.
I agree, I will say no other board would be concerned about that, um, but.
You can do what you want to do.
I think your point is well-taken, um, we're, we're gonna be launching this, uh, consolidation thing anyway, so that can probably wait. I mean, we, you know, we made it known when our goals and intents are there, so, um, some of these same discussions can happen. But we'll plan, I think, then as a formal vote perhaps for the next meeting.
And, and because that does tie into your reimbursement potential, that official vote needs to be efficient, so.
What do you mean by that?
In other words, that's one of the, one of the requirements in your reimbursement, when you apply for, uh, your, your state reimbursement, they wanna know that they, that it was, uh, the board had edited that.
For our next meeting, can you give us some of that background so that we approach this and make sure we're doing it, cross it all, the keys and dot all the i's? Um, okay, I entertain a motion in adjournment. The motion is, Sue, second, Jen, all in favor?
Is that, did you check into the second section?
No, do it here.
Oh, so table that.
Table them.
That's table. Okay.